Good morning, good morning. At this time, can the host please start the live webinar? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to today's New York City Council hearing of the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions. At this time, can everyone please silence your electronic devices? If you would like to submit written testimony, you may send it to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Again, that's landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Farrah Lewis, Chair of the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions. I'm joined today by Councilmembers De La Rosa, Nurse, and Marte. Today, I will conduct votes and hold public hearings on a number of items, but before we begin, I will recognize the Subcommittee Council to explain today's hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. I am Arthur Ha, Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may do so in person or via Zoom. Those wishing to testify by Zoom for today's hearings were asked to register online. If you registered to testify and are not yet signed in, please do so now and remain signed in until you have completed your testimony. If you wish to testify remotely and have not yet registered, please do so now by visiting www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up now. If you have written testimony that you would like the Subcommittee to consider in addition to or instead of appearing before the Subcommittee, or if you require an accessible version of a presentation given at today's meeting, please send an email to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number or project name in the subject line of the email. We ask that everyone please be patient as we work through any technical issues today. Chair Lewis will now continue with today's agenda.
Thank you. I now open a public hearing on LU 125 for the Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 Developmental Proposal, which relates to a property in Councilmember Barron's District in Brooklyn. I'll note that the Subcommittee previously heard comprehensive testimony regarding this project, which also includes LU's 113 and 114 on September 20th. To summarize, the set of actions requested for this project includes UDAP approval and amendment to the Fresh Creek Urban Renewal Plan and amendment of a previously approved UDAP, all to facilitate the development of a new eight-story mixed-use building and nine four-story residential buildings with a combined total of approximately 751 affordable units. I just also want to mention that we've been joined by Councilmember Ung. Council, would you please call and swear in the applicant for this item?
The applicant for this item is Rosa Kelly, on behalf of HPD. Ms. Kelly, would you please raise your right hand? And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. You may begin.
Referencing our previous comprehensive testimony from the 920 Subcommittee, I just want to reiterate that this is an amendment to a previously approved UDAP to modify the number of units, the number of buildings, and in particular, the design of the buildings from an octet to a more sustainable building design.
Thank you. I now invite my colleagues to ask questions, if you have any. So kind, thank you. If there are no questions, the applicant panel is now excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on LU 125 relating to the Gateway Development Proposal?
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify on LU 125 relating to the Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 Development Proposal, please use the raise hand button now if you are participating remotely. And if you're here with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to first fill out a speaker card.
Members of the public...oh, okay. Since we don't have that, excuse me. So there's no questions for this panel? There's no members of the public? We're going to move forward to...we'll stand at ease, one second. All right, being no members of the public wish to testify on LU 125 relating to Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 Development Proposal, and public hearing is now closed. We will now vote to approve LU 125, which we just heard, in addition to LU's 113 and 114, which once again, the Subcommittee previously heard on September 20th. Together, these related actions comprise the Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 Redevelopment Proposal in Councilmember Barron's District in Brooklyn. The proposal would facilitate the development of one new eight-story mixed-use development, which approximately 191 affordable dwelling units, including 134 heirs' units, and nine four-story buildings containing approximately 560 affordable dwelling units. Councilmember Barron is in support of this proposal. We will also vote to approve LU's 119 through 124, covering the three projects proposed by HPD in coordination with a dedicated development team. These three projects, known as Morris Heights NPC...
This is correct?
NCP, sorry. LU's 119 and 120, Morisana Open Door, under LU's 121 and 122, and Morisania Clermont Village Open Door, under LU's 123 and 124, each include requests for UDAP designation and project approval, as well as approval for the disposition of city-owned property, as well as an Article 11 tax exemption request. The Morisania Clermont Village Open Door Project also includes a request for approval of UDAP tax exemptions. The projects together will facilitate the development of up to 75 units in a mix of affordable home ownership and rental units across various project sites. Councilmember Stevens, whose district includes many of the project sites, along with Councilmember Sanchez and Chair Riley, are all in support of these proposals. And now, I'd like to take a moment to recognize any of my colleagues with questions or remarks regarding these items. Seeing none, I now call for a vote to approve LU's 113, 114, and 125 for the Gateway Site 26A and Phase 5 Redevelopment Proposal, and LU's 119 and 120 for the Morisania Open Door Proposal, and LU's 121 and 122 for the Morris Heights NCP Proposal, and LU's 123 and 124 for the Morisania Clermont Village Open Door Proposal. Council, please call the roll.
Chair Lewis.
I vote aye.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Marte.
Aye.
Councilmember Nurse.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Ung.
Aye.
Okay, Chair, the items are approved by a vote of five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions. Oh, pardon me.
Councilmember Feliz has joined us.
Councilmember Feliz, I'm sorry.
I vote aye.
With that, Chair, the vote stands at six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and no abstentions. We can keep the vote open.
All right, we'll keep the vote open, but can proceed. I now open a public hearing on the pre-considered LU's related to ULP application numbers C220427, HAK, C220428, HUK, C220429, ZMK, and N220430, ZRK, for the Livonia Four Development Proposal, which relates to properties in Councilmember Barron's District in Brooklyn. He got a whole lot going on. If approved, these applications will facilitate the development of four new 100% affordable 11- and 12-story mixed-use buildings. The proposal includes approximately 499 dwelling units, ground-floor commercial space, and community facility space at four sites along Livonia Avenue in Brooklyn. I'll remind anyone wishing to testify remotely on these items. If you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that by now visiting Council's website, council.nyc.gov/landuse. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The applicant panel will include Jaclyn Skorinchi, Land Use Counsel, Brian Loughlin, Lead Architect, and Amy Pivak, on behalf of HPD. Also available for Q&amp;A are Rosa Kelly and Hala Sala for HPD, David Downs for Catholic Charities. I believe we have a couple of online panelists. We also have Casa Belai and Jonathan Butler, also with the development team, and they are joining us remotely.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Panelists, please. I will ask all panelists to please raise your right hand, and I will call on you each individually to answer the following. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
Sorry. Jaclyn Skorinchi.
I do.
Brian Loughlin.
I do.
Amy Pivak. Rosa Kelly.
I do.
Casa Belai.
I do.
And Jonathan Butler.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of today's presentation, please send an email request to landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. Panelists, please restate your name and organization for the record, because you came with a whole team today, so if you could do so. And also, if you would like to, please let us know when you would like to begin showing your presentation, so that our staff can display it on the screen. Thank you, and you may begin.
Okay, can we pull up the presentation? Thank you. Great. Good morning, Councilmembers and Subcommittee Chair. My name is Amy Pivak, and I'm here representing HPD. I'm joined by Jackie Skorinchi of Acreman and Brian Loughlin of Magnuson Architecture and Planning, as well as Rosa Kelly, also from HPD. Next slide, please. Thank you for having us here to present this proposal for this truly transformative project on four sites along Livonia Avenue in Brownsville. Overall, the proposed project will provide approximately 498 affordable units, affordable to folks at a range of incomes, including supportive and senior housing, as well as commercial and community facility space. Since the proposed development project is comprised of four separate sites, we have a large team assembled. In addition to Brian, Jackie, and Rosa, we're also joined by three developers, including Catholic Charities of Brooklyn and Queens, represented by David Downs, the Brownsville Partnership, represented by Casa Belai and Noel Myers Powell, and Radson Development, represented by Jonathan Butler. Next slide, please. This proposed project is a result of a collaborative community process that started in 2016 with residents and community partners, and led to the development of the Brownsville Plan. The plan details strategies to bring investment to the Brownsville community, as well as to put land that has long been vacant to better use. In furtherance of the goals of this plan, HPD released a series of RFPs to meet the community's priorities, including this group of sites, known as Site C, which has a theme of healthy living and food systems. Next slide, please. The development team partners have committed with the city to continued outreach in Brownsville after they were awarded this RFP. This slide highlights the continuous outreach and community engagement that has included a series of public forums, the Hope Summits, driveway meetings, and door-to-door outreach. Next, I'll hand it over to Jackie to talk through area context and existing conditions.
Good morning. Next slide, please. The Livonia Four Project is comprised of two specific project areas with four different development sites. This is Project Area 1, which is located along Livonia Avenue between Powell Street and Mother Gaston Boulevard. And Livonia Avenue in this area is major commercial corridor. It is the elevated three-line runs along it, so it is a transit-oriented area. And just to the north of these developments are the Nycha Van Dyke Houses, the Tilden Houses, and the Brownsville Houses, so they're tower-in-the-park buildings that range from six to 25 stories. And then, immediately south of the project area is the Nehemiah Homes, which are two-story homeownership buildings. Moving to the next slide. Five blocks west of Project Area 1 is Project Area 2, where Site C4 is located, and this is between Amboy Street and Thomas Boylan Street. And it is right across the street from the 10-and-a-half-acre Betsy Head Park, to give you context. Next slide, please. You can see from the existing conditions, these are long vacant city-owned lots in need of revitalization and redevelopment. Next slide, please. I'll turn it over to Brian now to walk through the project benefits.
Thank you. The community benefits that are being provided by all four buildings directly reflect the needs of the community stated in the RFP that was released by HPD some time ago. Those four community benefits, which appear on all four of the buildings, include housing affordability, economic opportunity, community empowerment, and health and wellness programs. Next slide, please. In addition to that, all four buildings and the project in general provides a number of economic opportunities, and they're spelled out here on the slide before you, but I'll run through some of the highlights, including the Recruitment and Training Center, and a hiring campaign, which will be part of the project. We'll be working with local hiring partners. Brownsville Partnership is partnering with the Brownsville Workforce Development Alliance, as well as the Central Brooklyn ADC. The total direct employment impact is going to approximately be 475 construction jobs, 83 permanent retail and social service jobs, and 11 permanent building operating jobs. The project overall will meet the minority and women business enterprise contracting requirements, exceeding the 25% of project costs to be spent on contracts with M&amp;WBE contractors. There will also be a youth career readiness program, featured as part of one of the programs offered in one of the four buildings, and then there will also be green job opportunities, including entrepreneurship and apprenticeship with Project Eats, which will be featured in one of the buildings as well. Next slide, please. So, as was previously stated, there are three...sorry, there are two project areas. The first project area in the image on the screen in front of you is closest to us, and that's comprised of three different buildings. The first of which is C1, which will be developed by Radson Development, and that's between Powell and Sakman Street. C1 will feature approximately 226 units of multifamily housing. There will also be a grocery store at the ground floor and a rooftop farm on the top of the building that will be developed in partnership with Isabelias Ladies of Elegance and Project Eats, which are two local organizations very active in the urban agriculture space in this neighborhood. C2, which is just across the street, moving down Livonia between Sakman and Christopher Avenue, and C2 will be developed by Brownsville Partnership, along with SEO Family of Services. This building will feature approximately 81 units of supportive housing, and will also have a family support center at the ground floor. C3, which is directly adjacent to that and between Christopher Avenue and Mother Gaston Boulevard, will be developed by Catholic Charities, and this will feature approximately 140 units of senior housing, and will feature a large senior center at the ground floor servicing the community, as well as the residents of this building. The second project area is down...is moving further down Livonia Avenue and is across the street from Betsy Head Park. C4, which will also be developed by Radson Development, in conjunction with Brownsville Partnership, will feature approximately 55 units of affordable multifamily housing and a substantial youth recreation center. Next slide, please. In an attempt to meet the housing affordability goals as stated in the RFP, the development team worked very hard to match as closely as they could the AMI's and the unit distribution by AMI within the needs of the community. So, on the slide that you see in front of you, the orange bands are the AMI tiers as met by percentage for the four buildings in total. The white bars are the AMI levels of Community District 16, and the black bars are the AMI levels of Brooklyn as a whole. And so, you can see how, working within the limitations of the term sheets, we did our best to meet the needs of the community based on AMI levels. Next slide, please. So with that, I turn it back over to Jackie.
And there are a number of land use actions we're requesting, but to summarize, the first is a rezoning from the existing R6 and R6C24 to an R72C24, and that allows for the building program to include almost 50,000 square feet of community facility, as well as commercial space and affordable housing, residential development, across the four different programs that Brian just described, as well as a zoning tax amendment to designate the rezoning areas, mandatory inclusionary housing areas. And then, the next three actions are pursuant to HPD's authority to dispose of the property, to designate the area an urban development action area, and also to obtain an urban development action area approval for each of the sites. And finally, an amendment to the Brownsville 2 Plan for Sites C1, C2, and C3, which only permitted commercial use, and this amendment will allow the mixed-use development that the applicants are proposing. And with that, thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions that the committee may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a few questions before turning it over to my colleagues. First question is, these sites have been developed for decades. Can you describe HPD's process for deciding how to...how and when to move forward on development of city-owned sites like these?
Hi. So, HPD has a robust RFP process by which we move forward with the designation of public sites for affordable housing. So, as part of that process, our planning teams and our borough planning teams and our neighborhood strategy teams actually work together to craft a series of outreach and engagement events. We solicit feedback from the local community on the type of programming that they want to see. This particular project is a result of the Brownsville Plan, which was a really robust community engagement process, which I think Amy referenced earlier, cultivated in the selection of multiple development teams for multiple public sites, and this particular group was designated with the idea of healthy living, and so that's what we strive for, for the programming for all of this. We are absolutely happy to share the Brownsville Plan and also the engagement materials, and we're very proud of the engagement work that we did on these public sites.
Thank you for that. And does HPD plan on replicating the community planning model of the Brownsville Plan in other neighborhoods under this administration?
That's something we're absolutely interested in discussing more.
And the community board voted to disapprove this project due to issues with encroachment and questions about the property lines between these properties and neighboring homeowners. So have those issues been addressed?
That's exactly right. And I will say, we have successfully resolved all but one of the encroachment issues, and actually, just this morning, we got an email confirmation that on that last site, we do have a path forward. So I'm happy to say that we have successfully resolved...on our way to resolving all of the encroachment issues. We do plan on confirming next steps, confirming with the community board, the homeowners association, the council member, what those next steps will be, but happy to report that we are well on our way to resolving all of those encroachments.
And that often happens, whenever there's development, there's encroachment issues, so it'd be good to have in writing for those homeowners and folks that have concerns what those next steps would look like, so that they don't enter, you know, any kind of contract that they don't want. I now invite my colleagues to ask Councilmember Nurse. She has a quick question.
I guess I just have one question. So I'm seeing across the four sites, there's only 14 three-bedroom units. I'm just concerned, I mean, obviously, people are supportive of it. I mean, I'm just, you know, deeply concerned of the continuing pattern of creating affordability for like one, you know, families with one child. You have a lot of studios here, which I get for the seniors, but, you know, the two bedrooms are really small, and I'm sure, based on the square footage, those bedrooms are probably very tiny. So if you have three kids, you're kind of really, you know, SOL. So I guess I'm just curious why there's only 14 three-bedroom units for families that have...that are big in East New York and Brownsville.
So before I turn it over to Brian to discuss a little bit more about the unit mix on a site-by-site basis, I will just say that part of what we're seeing in that mix is both the supportive housing and the senior housing, and those do tend to, you know, skew towards single adults. And so, we...because we have two of the four sites for supportive and senior, that is contributing to the overall mix of a greater number of studio and one bedrooms compared to the larger ones.
So just to clarify, for the C1 site, which is a multifamily housing, 226 units, 4% of it is three-bedroom. And that's...is that...how much of that is supportive housing for C1? I might be reading the information wrong, I'm just like more for clarification.
Yeah, so the...that's correct. There are eight units in C1 that are three-bedroom units. The supportive units are usually evenly distributed across the 226 approximate units.
Okay. And then for C4, 55 units of multifamily housing, six units are three-bedroom, and how much of that is supportive housing?
Again, the supportive component of it is the 15% formerly homeless set aside, and that would, again, be evenly distributed across the 55 units.
So eight of those units, if this is correct in the breakdown, eight of those units are...
Yes, I think that's correct.
The studios? Yes, okay. Okay.
All right, we would love a follow-up on the next steps regarding the homeowners. If we could get that in writing, we would appreciate that. Thank you. If there are no other questions from my colleagues, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on pre-considered LU's relating to Livonia Four Development Project?
If there are any members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LU's relating to the Livonia Four Development Proposal, please use the raise hand button now if you are participating remotely. And if you are here with us in person, please see one of the sergeants-at-arms to fill out a speaker card.
All right, being that there are no members of the public... All right, being that there are no members of the public who wish to testify on pre-considered LU's relating to ULARP application numbers C220427HAK, C220428HUK, and C22429ZMK and N220430ZRK, for the Livonia 4 Development Proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. This concludes today's, sorry. Sorry, I now hand it over to Council.
Chair, just to re-announce the vote, the items were adopted today by a vote of six in the affirmative, zero in the negative, with no abstentions, and they will be recommended to the full Land Use Committee.
Thank you. This concludes today's business. I remind you that if you have written testimony on today's items, you may submit it at landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number, or the project name or project address in the subject heading. I would like to thank members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, and Land Use staff, and sergeant-at-arms for participating in today's hearing. This meeting is hereby adjourned.